From Fruitland across to Waysey, 55 miles. It's just...
You're live, Madam Chairman.
All right, good morning and welcome to November 22nd. Commissioner Hasburg is out ill today, so we will go forward without him today. So I'd ask everyone to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda? Do we have any changes, Dave?
I didn't have any changes, no.
There's nothing Doug would need to add that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so I'm... Accept a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Casey. Look through everything, I didn't see anything. I didn't have any questions for you this time. What?
Hard to believe.
Oh, my gosh. Mark this one on the calendar, Douglas. All right, so...
Yes, he said there wasn't much on there.
No, so this one's the ARPA, coming out of the ARPA funds. The previous one, the invoice that we held on to, and then a new invoice.
Okay, awesome. Dave's our motion to approve the claims, border claims.
I will make that motion to approve the claims and the border claims.
And there are no junior colleges this week, so I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
We've got a few minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, safe drives.
Yeah.
I think I missed some emails. That was easy this time. I didn't see any changes in Doug's stuff either, man.
Can't believe it.
Must have been not even working, I don't know.
It's amazing how much the pre-reading background stuff ebbs and flows, like our workload in general.
Yeah.
Through the month, through the season, I guess. We need to get the host lead Doug request on there. Next, next meeting, Doug, did you see that? They were asking about the funding. What is the funding changes because they're not going to do the banquet?
I don't think he sent it to Doug.
Yeah, I did not receive that, and I think we've already mailed the check. We cut that, the last claim, let me confirm.
So he just wants to change...
It came to the commissioners, yeah.
Wants to change where it goes. I don't have any heartburn with, but I don't know if it needs a formal... Yes, you can change it to purchase other things.
Morning, Mr. Oki.
Morning. Morning.
Morning. Good.
Morning.
Morning.
We're waiting for June.
I'm a little bit gimpy still. The knee, I don't have to have surgery.
Oh, that's good.
The bone isn't healing right, but I'm supposed to be on crutches and I don't, so...
I'll come back to haunt you.
Yeah. Everything else...
Can you say arthritis? Can you say arthritis?
Yeah, well, everything else in my body's been broken in years, so... Are you guys waiting to start official business?
We actually just...
Couple minutes.
Can I come up with... So, I'll let you guys read this. This has had to do with access over the hill. I work for the Cascade Vet Clinic, and we had an issue on Saturday. We almost lost a stock animal due to the issue. But we're just seeing if we can't do something to have where Dr. Keith and I have access over and back. Not recreational or anything, just we have to get to our clinics.
So because this is not on the agenda, we cannot act on this today. You can bring it... There is an opportunity for the general public, and we can read this in at the end of the day. But it does need to be on an agenda and noticed before we can act on anything.
Is there anybody that you guys would recommend that I speak to that can give us... Because...
It has to come through the commissioners. The commissioners actually closed the road, so...
Madam Chairman, if you deem this an emergency, we could refer to Mr. Oki to see if we could have the commissioners add it to the agenda today.
Brian, because it is something where they are trying to get to animals on the other side of that slide, then it's time sensitive? You want to read it?
Give me five minutes.
Would you like a copy of this here?
No, I think I understand what the issue is. I just want to review the statute.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right, June, you're up.
Oh, yeah?
Yep. Elton's out ill today, so not with us.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
So we are still fielding. I have two that are going to be going out today to field. They are getting pretty well wrapped up, but we will have a second run of building permits, maybe near the end of December, first part of January, weather permitting. They've done an unbelievable job. I got a stack, and I am not exaggerating, probably three inches thick of cleared building permits. They have just hit it.
They're doing very... Well, those are closed, and those are the ones that they've looked at now?
Yep, and that's what they're working on getting on the rolls. So I think it's going to be a busy year next year. We are still advertising foreign appraiser. We do have some applicants, but we haven't gotten a lot. I would like to just have a little bit bigger pool before we do start doing interviews. So we haven't, we haven't done anything there yet. BMV is doing good. I have, one, the Cascade gal is on vacation, and Trina will do just fine by herself this week. And Jana will be alone for a couple of days up in McCall. They're doing great. They have taken the signs down at McCall because with Jana onboard and trained now, they can do appointments and walk-ins. They're staying pretty much on top of it, so it's, it's working out really, really well for them. Really well. Kathy had mapping last week. She took a week-long mapping class. I'm sure she aced it. She said, "I think I might have missed one." Yeah, she, she loves it. She's going to do very well in our front office in helping Lori with the mapping. Lori has done a lot with our maps. She's got us caught up in current. She's got a lot of splits and combos that she's going to be hitting. She is working from home right now. It, it has worked out better for us to have her at home right now. And then she'll be in the office probably near the end of this week, Friday probably. So that's pretty much everybody. Sue Probst is still helping us on Fridays and Mondays.
So on the building permits, do those go on the tax rolls this year?
It would be for '22.
Twenty-two.
So they get their certificate of occupancy now, and then next year goes on the roll?
Mm-hmm. If, if they were completed in enough time, we would put them on the occupancy roll, which would put them on for '21. For if it was completed, let's say July, we would probably put it on for about five months on '21. But we have all those. We've covered all...
Yeah, they came in at the end of the year.
Pardon?
I said these, most of these came in right at the end of the year anyway, so...
Yes, and these aren't all just houses. I mean, these are sheds, barns, garages, houses, so... And it's also for previous years, you know, things that weren't finished or cleared off yet. But they've done a, they've done a really good job in the front office. And like I said, my cartography lady, they're doing great.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else?
Nothing for me, thanks, June.
Thanks.
Dirk Miller.
Good morning again, Commissioners. As previously reported, we're working on the year-end reports. I have met with Jeff McFadden and Mickey from the Road Department to begin the reporting of the annual street financial report. We are going to be meeting again, but the deadline for that is the end of the year, so we will be able to accommodate or accomplish that report. So our first meeting lasted about two hours just to make sure that we had all the financial data that they needed. And now they're working on the expenditures that were made. So they will more than likely present to the Commissioners, I believe, on December 13th is what we have proposed at this point in time for the Commissioners to review that report. I've completed the annual trial court administrative report. That has been submitted to the Supreme Court. Skip and I completed the juvenile justice report. He is presenting that to you today. Now, the last report that I will need to complete is the waterways and snow grooming annual reports. I'll be working with Larry and Kevin to complete that report. And those are all the annual reports that are due to be submitted. I have also submitted the Valley County's annual financial report to the Legislative Services Office. This is the last year that the counties will be reporting to Legislative Services Office. If you recall, the state, I believe it's the Treasurers' Office, is now taking that over. So all of the annual reporting will be done through them instead of the Legislative Services Office. I think the Legislative Services Office, I don't know what their role is going to be, if they're going to be absorbed by the Secretary, excuse me, by the Treasurers' Office. But the, if you recall, the reporting requirements have changed for taxing districts to report directly to the Treasurer now. So we will be making that transition. For courts, we are still not doing in-person court unless the judges deem necessary, of course, for like sentencings on felony cases. But we are supposed to go back to open court after December, December 6th, is what the Supreme Court initially said in their order. I have not heard one way or the other if that's going to change, but we'll just kind of keep in close contact, of course, with the Supreme Court to determine when we'll be back to normal court proceedings. So at this point in time, we're still on limited court access.
We changed our janitorial because we weren't having court. I mean, are they still cleaning there every night?
Yeah, my, they, from what I know, they're still cleaning every day. Just to give you a couple other dates, we are going to be officially closing with Computer Arts our fiscal year 2021 with, by this week, that will be completed. So we will have Computer Arts come out and close us out for fiscal year 2021. We've already began expenditures and revenue for fiscal year 2022, but just to let you know, we are working with Computer Arts to officially close us out. And then our annual audit with Zweigarts and Associates was moved, but the new dates are January 26th, 27th, and 28th.
Have you looked at the new, the Computer Arts, the new company? Have you seen any of their stuff yet?
So Jeremy, our IT Director, Wilcox, did reach, was going to attempt to make contact with the President of that company just to see what type of financial software they have, what type of building permit software that they have, potentially any type of payroll. But I don't know if he was able to make contact with that individual or not. But we are going to be reaching out to them just to see, as the Commissioners are fully aware, Valley County was still, was in the process of looking at upgrading our financial software. And we'll just see if the company that has bought Computer Arts has the similar technology that we were looking at through Tyler. And we will probably debrief the Commissioners on what the outcome of that meeting with... I can't remember the name of the company, I apologize. But we are, I did request Jeremy to reach out to the company that purchased Computer Arts just to see what type of software that they do have.
I guess, you know, I mean, if we are starting a whole new year and we're still on Computer Arts, then all of our information is going into the old Computer Arts software. So, yeah, we probably should, Jeremy, sooner rather than later, and just figure out, you know... Because I, I would assume that they're still taking care of us as far as supporting everything.
They are. Yeah, that, that has not changed. But again, we want to know is, do they have intentions of upgrading the software that we are currently on? Because we are no longer going to be utilizing that software. We have officially made that decision based on, I, I apologize for this comment, but the archaic financial program that we're currently on, it, it needs to be upgraded one way or the other. That's either with the, the new company that bought Computer Arts or us moving to another company. I don't think that is under debate. I think what our goal was, was in 2023 to be transitioned to a new software. So it's going to happen one way or the other. It's just determining which company we're going to be utilizing.
Well, ask Jeremy when he comes in later.
If you had a chance. Lastly, the elections. You, you were fully aware of the canvas of the votes and the audit that was conducted. There was a press release related to that, and we are moving forward at this point in time. But we are going to be rectifying that issue. Once all of the deadlines have passed, we will then be working with our GIS analysis, the Secretary of State, to make sure all of those mapping errors were corrected. So we will have that corrected by the next general, by the next election that we are going to be handling. And with that, that's all I have.
Thanks, Doug.
All right, thank you.
Brian.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner Bingham. It's good to be with you. I don't want to make it a habit of bringing a big fat book to the prosecutor's, the prosecutor's report. In fact, I don't have a whole lot to report, other than I do want to give some time to our new deputy prosecutor to introduce herself to the board and, and answer questions. But before we get to that, there was a question about open meetings. And this, that's the reason for the book. So you, you do have the authority under the open meetings law to amend the agenda once a meeting has started, but you need to make a motion and give a good faith reason on the record why the agenda was, was needing to be amended. So you can take, take up the issue. However, if you are going to take action on a non-agenda item, you do have to declare an emergency with another explanation as to what justifies the emergency on the record. So it, it's really a two-step process. There needs to be a motion and a, and an explanation for the, or a topic that's not on the agenda. And then, and then I think you need to think through whether or not this is an emergency and, and how this would impact people who may want to weigh in on the issue before you, before you do take a vote and make a decision. So I think you have, you have the process and the procedure. Then it's really up to you to decide whether or not, is, want to declare an emergency and take action today or, or listen to the issue and then take a vote at the next regular meeting. So unless you have any questions, I will turn over the rest of the time to our new prosecutor.
Thank you. I don't get to see you around the building. I said, "I know that I recognize her face, but I'm not certain where she's from," so...
Yes. So good morning, Commissioner.
It's good to have you in here.
I was not prepared to make a formal speech to you this morning, so I do apologize.
That's okay, we're not formal.
A little off the cuff. My name is Ashley Moore. I'm the new Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. This is the beginning of my third week now. Brian Nagle has obviously felt comfortable enough to, I think, take a little bit of time off now that I'm here to assist with some of the workload. And I think that hopefully is a good sign that he's able to trust me with some of the responsibilities. I think you might be aware, I know I met you briefly a few weeks ago. I do have experience as a prosecutor in Chicago, about 18 years worth. So I'm coming here with at least a breadth of knowledge regarding criminal law and presentation in court. My biggest hurdle so far has just been getting up to speed with some of the nuances between Illinois law and Idaho law. And that's been pretty easygoing so far. There's lots of similarities in most regards, so... Looking forward to the Supreme Court lifting all of the restrictions on in-person appearances and trials and getting back to what I'm most comfortable doing and being in court every day, or most days, so... And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about me or where your expectations for me are, I guess.
Well, we're blessed because Brian's an elected official too, so he gets to run his department and division like he chooses to do. I'm really happy to have you on board. I think, you know, staffing that division has been really important for us, make sure we're prosecuting, you know, all the cases that need prosecuted. I know that the Sheriff's Office has been very pleased with having Brian and Brian, and now you on board, and we're excited about the safety and concern for our communities, so I am anyway.
He's welcome.
Yeah, welcome. I don't have anything to add to that. I might need to come up with a nickname for you or something.
Well, Brian probably should be my nickname at this point.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm kind of disappointed they didn't hire another Brian.
Right.
Thank you, guys, nice seeing you again.
Nice meeting you. Okay, so in order to amend the agenda, you want to take this up?
Yeah, I think we should discuss it. I don't know where we can fit it in. I'm going to try to put it in like our...
Why don't we do...
Turn in in the Commissioners discussion?
Maybe...
That's 11:45.
Let's have it underneath Jeff at Road and Bridge.
Oh, that'd be a good call.
So that we can have a conversation with him about it, too. I move that we move or amend the agenda to include a conversation regarding the Cascade Veterinary Clinic's use of Smiths Ferry Drive in order to get to the animals that are in need there.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So motion's passed. We will discuss this with our Road and Bridge Superintendent at 11:00. Okay, so, yeah. So you can either listen in on YouTube. Just go to the Valley County Commissioners YouTube page.
I don't need to be here.
You don't need to be here, we can discuss it.
Up to you.
Is it okay for me to be here?
Absolutely.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Doug, do I need to go write that out on the agenda?
Yeah, I think we definitely need to add it, yes, ma'am.
Right back. The document's been jenned out.
Okay.
Sheriff. So I had, I had a voice message from Keith's office in reference to being able to use that, and I was going to bring it up, so you already know about it, and so we're good with that.
Okay. How many accidents did we have? I heard that we've had a bunch of slide-offs.
We have had slide-offs.
Yeah, any idea what the condition of the road is?
Well, it was because some of it was black eyes, obviously, so...
Okay.
Yeah, and you usually have some of this stuff going on. And are you, are you talking in general or area? Oh, there was one I had read about, and no one has told me about it, up on that Smiths Ferry Road or Hacker John Road.
Will you send an email if you hear of anything between now and 11:00? You know, that if we've had accidents up there? You know, that might talk to the conversation a bit?
Okay.
I can attest to some of the road condition because they did end up letting me through on Saturday. And on the top, there is some snowpack from the storms Thursday night or whatever. And there was some snowpack, and it was packed down and a little bit slick, and people have a tendency to go too fast. We all know that. And I've been hunting that road for 35 years, and I've seen cars off the steep. We understand the threat. So yes, there, there is some ice on it.
And then we're going to, we're supposed to get another storm tomorrow. But, you know, if, I, I understand that, you know, I mean, Keith has his business down there too in Garden Valley and needs to get to the animals as well, so... And then in reference to Computer Arts, we still have Computer Arts for our civil process. So I, I haven't reached out yet to Harris Company about that, but if you're... So I'll need to have a discussion with you guys on what your decision's going to be going forward as well, so that I know that we're covered.
Have you talked to Jeremy about any Computer Arts?
Not this, I just had to ask him, I started asking him some questions, and he had just found out about the, the selling of Computer Arts. So I just want to reach out to them and see what their, you know, their civil... Supposedly it's the same programming that people have, but maybe there'll be some enhancements to it as well.
Who do you interact with on, on the civil process? I mean, does it integrate into any of the state programs or anything else?
No.
Just within your department?
It's ours, and, and it's the financial part that we like.
Okay.
Is it the best financial? No, but it was better than what was presented to us in our new records management system. So we needed to keep that.
Lots of changes, well, like computer software.
Yeah.
It works.
So, yeah, and even though, you know, we haven't seen a whole lot of traffic since the road closure, our guys have still been very busy with other calls, so...
Everybody's going to want that road to stay closed.
I don't know, it's really inconvenient for...
Very inconvenient.
For when you need to be down there, so anyways.
All right, thank you. Hannah in here? Oh, she is.
Hi, good morning. It's really short and sweet. Taxes are being mailed out today. Tax return's done. Probably shouldn't pick up till about the week before taxes are due. This is when the office will really get busy.
Okay, so that's been a big conversation on Facebook, is when the notices were going out. So I will have McKenzie send out something on our Facebook post that they will be mailed today.
We have people who are signed up to receive that notification because we just had, Jessica said $36,000 done over the weekend. So people got their bills online.
Oh, nice.
That's, that's an option. They can receive a text or email message that it's been downloaded, and then they have access to immediately go in and see their tax statements.
I'm going to have McKenzie reach out to you and find out what that process is so that we can put that process within our social media posts, and then people can go ahead and sign up for their account.
We've all, we walk people through it if they call. It's usually as soon as somebody has a question about their statement is we let them know they can sign up and receive those notifications, and we'll walk them through the process, how to do that, but...
Perfect.
Any information she needs, just have her call us.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, department heads, Annette. Good morning.
I don't have a lot for you again. We've got total this year, 414 permits since January 1. Last year at this time, we had 369. And then last year on this day, we had 300, or total year, excuse me, we had 376.
So last year on this day was 369.
Yes.
And then we had 376 total.
For last year. And so far this year, it's 414.
And next year will be probably more than that.
And we've still got, I'd say at least 20 sitting on the shelf. I've got five or six sitting on my desk. We're still getting them in, so. We're not, we're not done yet for the year.
A lot of people that are very appreciative of the weather right now.
Yeah.
Scrambling.
How many do you think are gonna get closed out by year end?
Closed out?
You got some that are almost to the end?
Not many for 2021. Quite a few for 2020. I can figure that out if you want.
Just curious.
I don't know, maybe, maybe a few for this year, but not a lot because the houses are just so big. You know, we'll have decks done and garages done and stuff like that. Probably not a lot of houses. Tony and Marcia did some classes last week on manufactured housing. It's required every year, so.
Good. You got to do it.
And inspections are still going. Not as busy, but it's still busy enough. That's about it. Good?
Perfect. Start scanning soon, right?
Yes, we are. We've started doing that. Tony started on that the other day, so.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Oh, you know what? Before you go, though, so I talked to Jeremy about your and Cindy's questions. Have you had anything further as far as scanning and knowing where it's supposed to go and how it's supposed to be processed?
Any more training?
Any more conversations with IT?
Oh, yeah. She was up just the other day talking to us about it.
Okay, great.
We're figuring it out.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Yep. Did you have as fun a drive down this morning as I did?
Yeah, there's actually a pretty bad accident just by hazard trick.
Oh.
That was 20 minutes.
Pretty icy in there?
Yeah.
Jady?
Yeah, I think it was just ice, just one vehicle, but the road was plugged up for half hour.
It's somebody that was scared to death in the fog and we did 38 and a 65.
Yeah.
I was practicing my patience.
This time of year, I always try to drive slow because usually I get ahead of myself and start sliding. Few different things. So I have one action item for the Idaho Department of Juvenile Correction Report. It's the financial report that Doug and I do every year. Should have that app. I'll be right here. Need it? And the gist of it is we get three different funding sources from, well, it's controlled by ADGC, but it's the Juvenile Correction Act Fund, which is federal funds, tobacco tax and lottery. So for the first two, Juvenile Correction Act Tobacco, that's usually pretty close to the same each year. 22 to 25. Those two go towards our juvenile PO's salary. Lottery funds, it can only be used specifically for prevention or the use of keeping kids, education for keeping kids away from drugs, alcohol, tobacco. And so that usually gets, we do about $1,000 to both the schools for their sober grad night and then just various projects. So the leftover fund over the years in that right now is $13,000.
So because this is asking for a password to get into that Excel?
Form C.
I realized that yesterday. Form C?
That's all it is. A lowercase.
Remember, I couldn't get into this. Oh, we are just approving this report to submit?
Yeah. And then the second section, section two, that gives our estimate of what we determine is the cost for the juvenile probation. So it's DD salary and then just estimated cost for UAs, electronic monitoring. The next section, the detention, we budgeted $35,000 and we used $17,288 last year. And then that just explains what we use the money for on the back page.
Do you think that's gonna change this year now that, you know, everybody's not at home and can't, you know? With the change in COVID, is this gonna change this year, do you think?
Our
Your operating expenses?
I don't, I don't think so. Because what that is, that represents the total we pay for the juvenile PO, including the benefits, along with like the $1,000 in monitoring, an estimate of how much we do for UAs for juveniles. So I think it's gonna be, I mean, it stayed pretty consistent over the last three years. Give or take $7,000.
Perfect. I'll make the motion that we approve the juvenile justice annual report for fiscal year '21.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome.
Thanks, good.
So I've been appointed to the Post Juvenile Justice Training Council. They don't have a meeting set up yet, but I just got that letter this morning.
Are you smiling about that?
Yeah. No, it's, so I got off the Advisory Committee for the State of Idaho because it was just, it was a huge commitment. And I did it for three years. So this is a, an ending term, it doesn't have one, but I have about the same intention, three to five years. It's quarterly. We meet, we're doing a lot of meetings by Zoom now. So I don't expect it'll be a lot of my time, but I think it'll be valuable.
What do they focus on?
So it's the training, it's the post academies for juvenile probation and juvenile detention. So this is the body that controls the curriculum, what's taught, timeframes. Well, they, they make recommendations. Then it goes to the post council. That's how I put it.
Good to have you involved.
Thank you.
Valley County's name out there.
Everything else is going fine. All right?
Happy Thanksgiving to you guys up north.
Thank you. You too.
Lisa. Have a nice vacation. He's still smiling.
Yeah, so I have a bunch to get the report out. So feel free just to cut me off or ask questions. I attended the NET conference, which was the National Extension Tourism. That is a group that I haven't connected with before. And so because INC DEP, the National Community Development Association, was virtual, I was able to, that's normally the one that I go to. And so I was able to look out across the spectrum of extension and figure out where, where are there my other, the other content for me to connect to. And so anyway, it was interesting checking out that conference. And I think my big takeaway from that event was this concept of destination management organization and how, you know, there's been a shift there. It used to be a destination marketing organization. And so now it's not like just, you know, sell, sell, sell the region, come, come, come. It's more looking at the holistic, what do we have to offer and are we protecting those resources? And a bigger picture of like destination management rather than destination marketing.
I think that would be a fabulous opportunity to sit and have a conversation about.
I know.
What was the name of that, the conference?
National Extension Tourism. There was definitely more sessions that I was interested in than I had time to participate in. But I'm hoping that some of that was recorded and I haven't had time to go back and see if I could tap into some of those other sessions I thought were of interest. But there's a lot about agritourism there as well. And that's really a topic that is interesting because I have people calling my office wanting to buy land to start agritourism. What, you know, what agricultural enterprise is gonna be viable and how do I get that started? And I want to like have an Airbnb agritourism thing. I'm like, this, so it's just really odd requests. And I think we all know, you know, the direction that feels like we're going from outside influence. And so anyway, I was like just in awe of this concept of destination management. And then there was some extension educators, you know, working with kind of like the regional capacity building like we did with America's Best Communities, but under the lens of like, who is that destination? It was just really interesting. So a good, like, who is that DMO gonna be? And so as I'm like coming back into the community now, I'm thinking, do we have that? If we did, where would it, who would it be? What would it look like? Where could it live? What would, you know, what would be under that umbrella of that person?
Our recreation department?
Yeah. So just a, just a concept that inspired me.
So that McCall Chamber is kind of doing the exact same thing. They've backed way off all of the ads that they're gonna do this next year instead of bringing people here.
Mm-hmm.
So it'd be good for you to partner with them, too.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Lindsay. I held the Idaho Power Class virtually, and I do that annually. And so that was early November. And then I held a group and ICCD both in on those communications. But I was just, you know, looking kind of across the spectrum of who does community education and then did that survey. We had about 160 people participate, which is great participation, saying, you know, what do you want to see? What kind of resources do you want? What kind of training do you want? How do you want that delivered in person with masks, in person without, virtual, hybrid, all that? So good data collected through there. And then at the end of that meeting, someone was like, what is this called? And I was like, Community Educator Alliance. It's like, has a name now. I don't know if that'll stick. It was just one meeting. We're doing another meeting to follow up to look for, you know, where there's crossover and where there's opportunities to partner. And so the best compliment I think I received post that meeting was that I had light bulbs go off. And I was like, yes, if I can inspire light bulbs, then I'm doing my job. Continuing to work with Arts Committee. And, you know, as that progresses, I wondered, too, if that could somehow be under a DMO kind of lens. Currently, I need to work on some applications for national presentations and awards. Now is the window to do that. A meeting with the Mayor of Cascade and Shawna Arnold in December to talk about placemaking project that we hope to launch in 2022. Planning for the Master Gardener class. We currently have about half registrations. Currently following the university mask policy. And that's just that if we're in person with people teaching, then we have a mask on. In the office, we're not, we're not masking unless there's public coming in and then, and then we'll put a mask on to interact with them. The ripple mapping session, I feel like you probably already got a report on that, but I felt like that went really well. A lot of data was collected in a very short period of time. And working with Dr. Hudsonese, he wants to do that annually, just to check in to get good measurements for that grant reporting process.
That was for V Corp and?
Yeah, V Corps. Yeah. Continuing to work on scholarly product. I'm creating a bulletin on, like, steering committee formation. And so why do you do that? How you do that? What that would look like? I think that would be helpful for people in rural places, you know, bootstrapping, grassroots-ing it, having a little guidance on the ins and outs of what that looks like. And then Allison's quite busy as well. She's onboarding new leaders. She retained Rebecca, which was the AmeriCorps from last year, to do an after-school drone program. And she's received a lot of money for that drone program and along with other STEM programming. Rebecca's also employed now with the Cascade Cultural Arts Center along with Bree, which is the AmeriCorps from three years ago. And they're doing the Makerspace Program. And so it's so nice to plug people into other concepts or ideas that had them give it traction. And they did an awesome job last year. So it's great that, that their efforts are being retained.
So on the AmeriCorps program, they said on that work-based learning group for the state, and they are looking at apprenticeships that would model the AmeriCorps program. It'll be interesting to see how all of that works.
Yeah, that would be great. Very cool. If you have any questions, just reach out.
I will.
Yeah.
I'll give you a heads up.
Rebecca's also plugged in. I'm just gonna give a little quick update on our past Americors just because it's fun to see them plugged into different things, moving those efforts forward. But Rebecca's continuing to work with the Forest Collaborative Effort with Gary Thompson and Wes Keller. And then Bree, she's continuing to work with the Lake Cascade, Friends of Lake Cascade, with a high school program focusing on the HABs with a Pay at Children Forest. So I was like, oh, that's cool that you're still working with those people that you got connected with. And the last update is that I'm providing leadership to INC DEP. INC DEP is the state chapter of MACDEP, and I'm a president for years now. This will be my fourth year in 2022, and I'm hoping to pass that off. And so we're doing a retreat and I'm gonna have it in McCall. And so I'll be bringing community development folks from Idaho to the area to learn about what's going on here. And INC DEP has actually kind of grown to be like kind of regional states. And so I'm hoping, we had Utah and Montana come last year. And so I'm hoping we'll continue to attract people from other states, too, that are community development professionals because it feels cool to be bigger than Idaho. But anyway, so INC DEP is being planned in McCall for the retreat in 2022.
You need to give us glossary of terms when you start talking about your groups.
I know. MACDEP and INC DEP are, I think, kind of hopefully just the, and then that, you know, I mean, there's just a million. It's jargony. But yeah.
When is the?
Is Idaho Association for Natural Resource Community Development Extension Professionals. So it's just the natural resource and the community development people in an association.
When is that?
September 19th to the 21st. And so it'll be in the fall. And I have my tentative agenda outlined. And it's, you know, it's evolving, but there's another program that's happening about leadership development that's working through an AFRI, which is agricultural food. I should know this one because that's a lot of funding comes from AFRI through extension. But it's a federal money source and it's a grant that was received. And so in that grant, we were putting our heads together saying, you know, how do you build community leadership and capacity? And how do you get people to identify with leaders to move things forward? And so we're in the process with working with a professor on campus to delve into a leadership program that would be kind of the hybrid model, which would be, you know, in-person classes connecting to content expertise all around the state and probably tri-state. It'll probably be three statewide efforts of people contributing and not competing with local leadership classes, but trying to enhance it.
I was gonna say, could you work with the Leadership Academy and?
Right, yeah. And so we're recognizing that there's leadership classes that are already in existence and already taking place. And so we're not trying to re, we're not trying to compete. We're not trying to reinvent. We're trying to build and like give more energy towards that. And so anyway, that program, we're hoping to launch a pilot with extension educators to get feedback and make it robust. And then we'll debrief it at the INC DEP retreat. You're getting way too many details. But, and then we'll launch to the public. So that's kind of all coming together is what the point is, these conversations. So any questions?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. Thanks.
Scheming and planning.
Sounds like something we need to attend in September.
Yeah, yeah. That would be great. I'll share the agenda and I'll see if you guys are interested or if you have anything that you think should be on there to highlight Valley County. Thanks.
That is not with us as the road closer. So she's working remotely and she had sent in just a brief synopsis on what she's doing. So thank you to everyone that took the leadership class. It sounded like that was great. And I was in Boise, so I didn't get it taken. Jeremy, we have lots of questions for you today. Hopefully you came prepared.
I hope. Good morning. So you know, I was out Thursday and Friday with severe sinus pressure. So I had to go to the doctor. I got the swab test. No COVID, no symptoms. It was just, it was just a sinus infection that I'm getting over. So my voice is so little. So I'm not contagious or anything. It was just a sinus infection, so.
Those are going around right now.
Yeah.
Right.
It was pretty, I've never had one, so it was fun experience.
Yeah. All right, I'm glad you're feeling better.
So just a few updates that I have. The furniture for the EOC is gonna be installed this week. So a lot of my attention will be on that this week. It's supposed to start this morning, but the driver somehow made it all the way up 55 without seeing any signs, I guess. So we had to go all the way back down, all the way back around. So he's not gonna be here until around noon or 1:00. The new county website, we have a tentative date to actually launch that thing finally mid-December. And the software for the road department, I'm waiting for them to send me the annual contract so that I can get it to Mr. Oke to review. And once he gives his blessing, we can move forward with that.
So you are going to fix it or?
And I think that's about it, unless apparently you have some questions for me?
Computer arts. So have, knowing now that everyone's using computer arts starting for this year and that software is going away or the company is, you know, do you, any idea where we're at as far as identifying new software? You know, do you, any idea where we're at as far as identifying new software and what those upgrades are gonna look like? The time behind that?
So typically, if a company buys another company, they don't, they won't shut it down right away. So we play out some time. The company at the bottom is Harris. I'm trying to reach out to them to see what their sort of plans are. They're one of the big software companies, just like Tyler is. I discussed, discussed with Clark Miller if we want to take a quick look at what they had. And if we do, we can do that. If not, if, if we're happy with Tyler, then we can start moving forward anytime.
The sheriff noticed, or that what was happening, and so she's using computer arts also. So she's curious about what's going on, too.
Correct. Yeah, they're still using the civil module over there. On top, I'm trying to get some information from Harris.
I think that's it for me for now. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yep. Appreciate taking in on that computer art stuff.
Yep.
Harris.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too.
Ascenda.
Morning.
Morning.
I don't have flot today either. We had a work session last Thursday, but only one P and Z Commissioner showed up. So it was short. Couple of them were on the other side. That's the day the slide was. And so they didn't get here. We'll reschedule it. We do have the one scheduled for, I think, December 19th.
Third Thursday?
Yeah, it's the third Thursday.
And that's a joint one with us?
Yes.
All right, okay.
Yes. And we nothing.
How many applicants do you have for your positions? Because you have two positions now, correct?
I've received one. I have two positions. I've received one, um, within anticipation of three others.
And you've got it posted in the?
It is.
In the Star News.
Asked McKenzie to put it on the social media and that type of thing.
Anyone out there that has any questions about planning and zoning, get an application in. Just a letter of interest. Think how busy you guys, getting lots of applications now. I know you've had lots of conversations.
I've had lots of conversation. I've received a few of the applications for that and received additional ones on top. I think we've got nine things for December, nine new applications. Couple jug mountains, couple tamaracks. And some smaller subdivisions. Some interesting things. So, um, oh, Jody has been working on entering some of our permits into our P and Z layer. So, and then, you know, tying them into the, each different parcel. She's doing the floodplain first. And she's actually going through and, you know, becoming familiar with everything and kind of exciting. She was pretty excited.
Software do you guys use?
It's just a layer that, um, Tara has created for us. P and Z portal. I anticipate that someday, someday we'll have a little tablet that she can take out in the field with her and say, oh, they don't have a permit.
We envision two.
Yes.
County helicopter.
No, yeah, oh, yes, the drone, drone flying. Do you have anything for me?
No, thanks.
We're just busy. Lori's gone this week and.
Are you guys open on Friday?
Yes. Lori will be back for Friday. Yes, we're all open on Friday, I believe. Mr. Larry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was gonna say, nice sunny morning, but.
Yeah, it's getting worse.
Yes, it is. Um, you've got a warm-up there for the United Payette. It's an addendum for the original MOU. And we did that just because in the original MOU, it's at lease. And we want to have the office, option of going to a land use agreement, too. So we just wanted to be real clear on that.
Did that come from IDL that they wanted that changed? Is that where that came?
Yeah, they put a, well, they put a lot of pressure on us to go in that direction because that would give them the time to, because they're still working on their lease agreements and stuff out of AG's office. So that way we can get it done. And part of the issue is we want to get in there, get done and, um, and start moving forward soon.
I saw the changes didn't look.
I'll make motion that we approve the changes to the United Payette Memorandum of Understanding with Valley County.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Get that signed.
Uh, the two annual fours, sir, it's kind of funny. I wrote this before. I just got an email from Michael Beach. Um, they've got the Payette annual agreement ready, and I'll get a copy of that over to you guys. And, uh, Oki, when he was sitting here, I'll send that to him so he can take a look at it. Uh, the Boise will probably be a couple of weeks after that. So we'll probably be running without the agreement, which I'm sure will be fine. Our new signage to match our county codes, all the county codes we did on recreation. We've spent so far almost $1,500 on signage, so we're getting there. We're gonna start installing them today because we're already getting a lot of questions. But signage is, I'm sure will help out quite a bit.
On that signage, I saw something. Where did I see it? What phone number are you putting on that signage?
315, the county phone number.
The county phone number?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're getting rid of that 405 number as fast as I can. Oh, boy. Anyway, um, we're also starting a new project. I talked to Jeremy about it. It was suggested on our winter rec meeting, which gosh, I don't know why we didn't think, put a webcam at Titus. And that would go, would have an app onto our, um, our website so that if you, when you go into grooming, you can see if that parking lot's full or not.
Oh, that's a great idea.
And, um, so I don't know if Jeremy wants to do the research. I can do it if you don't want to. There's a guy at Brundage that said he'd help me.
Could be a popular, uh, application.
Oh, it'll be. I think so, too.
Over the weekend, I was in, I was in McCall, um, getting groceries. So I drove out there really quick to take a look. And, um, on the southeast corner, there's a light pole that does have two electrical outlets. So the things that we would need to do in order to make this work is permission from whoever owns that property to, mount a camera of some sort on that pole. We would need a, there's no network out there, but there is cellular signal. So we'd need a Verizon hotspot to run the camera. And that's about 30, that's, that's $39.99 a month for a standalone hotspot.
That just the data plan?
Yeah, it's just a data plan, yeah.
We turn that on and off depending on the time of year? Or run it all winter?
Yes, we could suspend the account over the summer if we wanted to, for sure, yes. Um, a small enclosure to put the hotspot in. Again, permission to mount that enclosure on the, on the pole. So those would be the, the costs. And then the road department has a bucket truck to help us, like, mount, mount the camera on the stuff, then awesome. If not, then we'd have to contract somebody to help us do that. So those are the, the costs associated, the things that we would need to do to make this work.
Great idea.
So.
So just at Titus, not at Francie or?
Well, the goal right now is to get that one done first. Uh, Francie Wallace doesn't have a cell signal. We did just put a brand-new, uh, 5G booster in there last year, and it's working better. But again, it's only working as long as we've got our generators running or as we do have one solar panel and it is not charging anything but the fuel pump. So that, that one, I think eventually, and I wrote that down here, what I'd like to do is, is get that one going, see how it works. And if it works good, then apply for a grant to do all of our parking lots and our campgrounds. Yeah, for, because it does, it's safety, it's, uh, education and, uh, security. So, yeah. I'm, I think it's gonna work great. It just, uh, just gotta get it done. So did you want me to look for the camera or?
I mean, if I didn't budget for it, so if you have a pay, a place to pay for it, I don't, if you want me to, uh, get the ball rolling. If, if this is something I want to move forward with, then I'd be more than happy to.
And I've got an old hotspot that you can have. I don't use anymore.
Oh, it probably is depending on whether it integrates with all of our IT stuff or not.
Yeah, the hotspot that they'll send us is free, so that won't be.
Yes.
Can get rid of it.
Larry, do you have that in your budget?
Um, I can pull it out of the budget. Yeah. It's, it's, it's not much. Yeah.
Work with Jeremy then to get that done.
Right. And then the, the future of it would be, uh, uh, grants. Cool. Get her going. Uh, Titus parking lot, uh, right now, as we speak, Adams County is, uh, putting together a letter of support to, we've run in, I've told you before, we keep running roadblocks on that. Uh, they're putting a letter of support together for, uh, an increased size of the Titus parking lot. Uh, the Recreation Committee is in favor of it. We, I was wondering if you guys, even though it's in Adams County, would be in favor of putting a letter together for, to support the expansion of that parking lot.
Supports our grooming program.
I'll, I'll, I'll write the letter and get it to you on, in a couple of weeks because we've got plenty of time for that. And I also.
What was the big hangup this go around as far as?
Oh, my gosh, you know, when it really comes down to it, I think it was, uh, kind, because you never know completely. But I think it was because we had a temporary ranger in the, at some New Meadows District. And I don't think the temporary ranger really understood what was going on. And, um, I know the supervisor's looking into it. She's supposed to give me a call again today and, and see if they can do it separately from the Granite Meadows Project. So we're just, uh, hoping for the best. It seems like we've had hiccups for eight straight years on it. And that's the way things work sometimes. Everything else is going well. We're getting all our, uh, all our, um, equipment's running. The new cat comes in the first week of December. Um, new drag's ready to go. Signage is a big project. We're in the middle of that. We ran the new, we ran the old cat up to Titus. So it's, we had a nice day and didn't have to change, chain up the truck. We moved it out there and it's ready to go.
Where's the new cat gonna go?
The new cat's gonna stay down at Francie Wallace till we work out all the bugs, because when they come in new, there's always.
I was just gonna ask you, oh, what's the break-in period on those things? Like, is that debug break-in or is it?
Well, I, I think it's almost gonna be our break-in period to some extent, because this is the first one we've had to put depth into. So all of our motors are the older motors. Now we've got to get into the habit of storing that at Lake Fork, because it has to stay thawed out. We'll buy the two and a half gallon jugs. And when Danny goes up to fill the cat up at Titus, he'll pick up a jug, make sure that's full and bring the jug back into Titus or into Lake Fork. It's something new for us.
That, okay, at Titus, yeah. Never mind.
Yeah.
So Francie Wallace, where are you on the expansion of Francie Wallace?
So, uh, they asked us, uh, Corps of Engineers asked us to perk it. So, uh, last weekend, Mark Wood and I, not sure who else went in and dug a bunch of holes, put some pipe in. And now it sits like that for a year.
That's a ways out before anything happens there.
Everything's a ways out. Yeah, but moving forward is the key.
We're learning patience, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Larry, do you guys have any trail counters in the program?
No.
That might be something interesting to see is like, what kind of numbers are we seeing going out of those two lots?
How do we, do they make ones that would count without having a lion across the trail?
Yeah, they have, uh, ultrasonic eye now.
Yeah, that, that's what we need. Otherwise, those carbines.
Relatively inexpensive, too. I think you could probably get those fairly inexpensively. I can't remember what the price was the last time I looked, but.
I'll, I'll research that.
I'd be really, I think the county would be interested. I think the cities would be interested in knowing. That'd be good numbers for your lot.
Yeah, the Francie, Francie Wallace would be the one that I'd really like to see. That, that would be quite interesting. And you guys do know that Cheap Thrills has changed ownership, so. And I've already contacted them and started the educational project. They seem great people.
They're local, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Have you had any pushback from any of the outfitters or the rental companies as far as the parking regulations?
Uh, not the rental companies. The outfitters have started and a couple of private people. But, um, um, I've talked with El about a few, they know Elt, so they always call Elt after they don't like my. That's basically what they said. They didn't get the answer they wanted from me. So they called Elt. And, uh, we're working on, we'll get it all worked out. And I could tell everybody, we're, this is the first year. We're gonna work through it. If we have some bugs, we'll adjust it. But we've got to get started on getting that thing under control.
Alyssa just had a very interesting program that I think that would be interesting to look at as far as the county. Destination Management?
Yeah.
Organization or operation?
DMO, destination, destination management organization, rather than the destination marketing, which is what, um, just a shift in approach. I'll share my notes with you.
Yeah, I kind of heard some of it. I was gonna ask you later.
Yeah, I think that would be very interesting.
Yeah.
We are definitely a destination. And how we manage that moving forward, I think that there's a, a really interesting concept behind that, so.
Yeah, good.
That's been, I mean, I've, I've mentioned that a few times, but that's been one of my concerns is that, you know, we, we need more parking, but we also, we gotta be real careful about the resource beyond the parking lot.
Right.
We're already experiencing crowding and it would be really helpful to know what kind of numbers we're seeing and peak times and non-peak times.
And so, and so far, you know, like a lot of guys, we, we get some kickback on Titus saying, we want more people. But the truth is, you get out a quarter of a mile, you get out to the snow and everybody just disperses. You can be out there and not see anybody. But then again.
Those days are disappearing fast.
They're disappearing, but we still gotta provide the infrastructure for people. Because right now, like, like, uh, when we had our, uh, winter rec meeting, um, my Commissioner Paritas shared that, they're having nothing but trouble because people, the parking lots are full and everybody's parking on the roads and colleges and safety issues. And, and we've got to take care of that, get them off the road, just like we did at Wellington. I mean, Francie Wallace, basically, get them off the road.
That's why I think in our strategic planning process moving forward, looking at that big map of where that, um, where the trails are and how we could create parking areas to access that network, but disperse that parking a bit.
Yeah, we had a comment from one individual saying, why don't we, it's pushing more towards Westface. But the whole idea of Titus was that's high elevation, so get snow early, snow late. Lot of our parking lots, especially Westface, uh, it's such a low elevation parking lot, there are times when you just can't even ride out of it. But, uh, last year it was used pretty well. And it is a parking lot that you can stay in overnight, where Titus you can't.
What about further up, uh, or past Brundage? And has that road, um, have you guys come up to any kind of a compromise on that Brundage road?
Yeah, yeah, we work with Brundage and we've got it figured out.
Is there an opportunity past them anywhere to put a parking lot?
Then that's the main snowmobile road. We'd have to plow the snowmobile road. It's kind of like we've talked about, uh, uh, maybe putting a parking lot down at, um, Coppa Crick. But then we'd have to plow the road that we're grooming and it just, you know, get people into it. And then there really isn't any place past Brundage. After that, you're going over the top of the mountain down to, my gosh, you'd have to be on Brundage Reservoir probably to have any real opportunities.
That'd be interesting to have a map and just see where all of that intersects or if it does.
Everything ties together. No two ways about that. The whole, always the question is, uh, at what elevation and who's gonna plow the road to get to it?
Well, if we can ever charge fees for anything, then.
We're trying.
Here's your plow.
And, and, and remember, when you do think about that, and I know you guys are in a hurry, but, but when you think about that, I always remember on Forest, Forest Service parking lots, we can't charge anything. And so we really want to stay on IDL or private property, if at all possible.
Do you have any further traction on, uh, the West Mountain intersection with a no-business road for expanding some parking opportunities in there?
Yes.
So preliminary.
Say yes. Yeah, we, in fact, we're having conversations and, uh, with, uh, gosh, I don't know how far I want to get in this, with another group that's looking at, um, some answers to the cabart parking issue. And we'll discuss that later, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else for us?
That's it. Have a wonderful day.
Thanks, you too.
I'm going to.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, we've got 20 minutes for our next presentation.